Call the Salem Housing Authority meeting for March 14th order. If the recorder would please do the roll call.
Commissioner Tesler.
President.
Commissioner Nankia is absent, and in his place we have guest Commissioner Jeffrey James.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Cannon is absent.
Commissioner Clem.
Here.
Commissioner Barco is absent. Sheriff Bennett.
Here. All right. And I want to welcome guest Commissioner and City Councilor Jeff James. Jeff, you're more than welcome to join in any discussion, comments. All you can't do is vote. So, great. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time this evening. Oh, yeah. You can't make motions either. That goes with the camp voting part. Okay. We have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the housing authority? And just before that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Rich, would you like to lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Counselor Dickey, would you make a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
Second.
I second.
Okay. Counselor Thomas seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
I got a quick comment if I could.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Salem Housing. That's for the urban renewal. Next meeting.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay. Consent calendar is accepted. No special orders of business, no unfinished business, no new business.
Good evening. I apologize. We've had a couple of last-minute things we're dealing with here. I welcome everyone who is here this evening. Thank you, Counselor Bennett, for opening the meeting. We're going to have the Urban Renewal Board meeting and then proceed to the council meeting. So I call to order the Urban Renewal meeting of March 14, 2011. It's now in session. Will the recorder please read the roll?
Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Tesler.
Present.
Board Member Nankia is absent, and in his place we have guest Board Member Jeffrey James. Board Member Claussen.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Thomas.
Here.
Board Member Cannon is absent. Board Member Clem.
Here.
Sheriff Peterson.
I'd like to open our time together this evening very quickly, but very solemnly, to say how very tragic and troubling the earthquake and tsunami in Japan has been for our city, for many residents in our city, and for many businesses in our city that have very close connections in Japan. And we wanted to assure you that we've been in touch with those businesses here, have visited those businesses to express our concern and our sorrows and our support as they move forward rebuilding their lives in Japan. We're fortunate that many of the families that we have spoken with here have not personally lost someone, but we know that really everyone has lost someone. So we wanted to be sure to offer to all the residents of Salem our true condolences and our encouragement to think of ways that you can remember and be helpful for people across the ocean that really need our assistance and our support at this time. Other counselors may have a comment. I wanted to ask Linda Norris if she would like to describe perhaps with our sister city. You've had some communication.
Yes. We've been in touch, as Mayor said, with a number of companies, but we also have a sister city, Calgary, Japan, and we have been in touch with them. Because they're inland and they're a little north of Tokyo, they haven't had as extreme of problems, but certainly are experiencing, as I said, a lot of aftershocks and continuing problems, as well as now rolling electric blackouts in order to preserve power because of a situation with nuclear plants, as well as just their power supply in general. So I think food and water and all emergency supplies, you know, countrywide are in big need there. So the people we've heard from are doing well. Their families are doing well, but I think just a lot of anxiety about what the future holds for them.
Thank you, Linda. Did someone on the council want to make a remark? I can't remember if there was someone who wanted to say something. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the time to be able to do this. Reports of boards and commissions, our first agenda item. And do we have people signed up to speak from boards and commissions? Do we? Right here? No. We have blank pieces of paper here. All right. No one has signed up. We'll go to public comment. Then we'll go to the consent calendar. Board President Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with a change in the minutes of February 14. It reflects a roll call that includes Counselor Sullivan and should be replaced with Counselor Claussen.
Okay. So there's a... Thank you.
Second.
Yes, Counselor Clem.
Does this include the action item, 4.3A?
Would you like me to pull that?
No. No. I just want to speak to it, obviously in favor of it.
Okay. All right. So it's been moved by President... Yes, by President Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to approve the consent calendar. Are there any discussions? Counselor Clem.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, I... This item that I'm speaking to is the Wallace Marine Park River Access Trail, and well covered by this morning's article in the Statesman Journal. This is part of a... One of four pieces to better connect people with the river in West Salem, and this trail will allow us to start thinking about how we improve all of that riverfront area for more trail, but also to be able to get folks off of the Union Street Railroad Bridge and get them to the bike facilities and walking facilities along Edgewater and the entire parks. So I just want to make the comment that there's much more that's going on than what this picture reflects. There are more connections to Glen Creek and to Edgewater, and future thoughts about what to do with the existing trails. So I'm very excited for this project and thank... Want to thank the Urban Renewal Agency Advisory Board members in West Salem for putting this all together and really starting to develop Wallace Marine Park. It's just not a softball field. There's tons more going on out there, and as people walk and bike it, eventually we're going to connect all these three parks and the river with the people that they support. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Clem. Yes, Counselor... Excuse me. Guest Jeff James.
Yeah, I noticed today... Counselor Clem, you remarked about the maps, and I think... I was remembering when I was on the Planning Commission that that was in a different century, and it was the age of faxes. And so by the time the fax of a fax of a copy of a copy reached the Planning Commissioner, we couldn't read the maps. And today I noticed the online packet is a much improved version of what we used to get, but it's still a fuzzy black and white monochrome thing. I think if we went to color PDFs, it would not have a budgetary impact, because most times the maps are produced in color anyway. So you save the scanned image as a PDF, and then that would be... Go on the website. And I think our neighborhood people and our citizens would have a... But I had trouble reading the map because I couldn't understand which was the trail that was leading. So just a general comment for maps in future, you might consider color PDFs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no information reports this evening, and I believe that we have no special orders of business. Is that right? We do the one... Oh, I'm sorry. We do have one special order of business. Oh, I'm sorry. All right. We have to vote on the consent calendar. I apologize. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion for the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Bennett and seconded by Tesler to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. And there is no special order of business this evening. Okay. And we have no unfinished business. I think we have no public hearings for the Urban Renewal Board. If there's no further items, then the meeting will be adjourned. The city council meeting of March 14, 2011 is now in session. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
Present.
Counselor Nankia is absent, and in his place we have guest Counselor Jeffrey James.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Cannon is absent. Counselor Clem. Counselor Clem?
Here.
And Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you. We have a proclamation this evening to present, and I'm very pleased to say that Counselor Laura Tesler is going to present this proclamation, but I'd like to also note that I'm very pleased to see this proclamation because it speaks to the strength of our neighborhood association system and the importance that we recognize in the neighborhood associations. And we've done a lot of work with Cessna. I personally had great contact with Cessna and been very, very pleased with the tremendous work that you've been doing there. So Counselor Tesler, would you like to come up and present this?
I think we have a microphone. If you want a microphone, just hold up, please. Okay, that should be on. Is this on?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Get that strong karaoke urge right now. So it gives me great pleasure to present this proclamation tonight, and I'd like to have the two people from Cessna come on up, and these are two board members. And I'd like to comment that this is my fifth-year-plus association with these people, actually six years if you count the year, that I was kind of learning the ways of the city. So I got to work with these two fine people. And Bill Smalldon used to be me. He used to be the city counselor for Ward 2. Well, not me physically, but you know what I'm saying. And Sharon... Oh, anyway. So proclamation. Whereas the people of Salem, Oregon strongly valor the unique differences among our city neighborhoods, and whereas Salem City Council members recognize the importance of engaging and communicating with all of its citizens, and whereas the Salem City Council understands that neighbors working together are a vital influence on the quality of life in our community, and whereas the Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association was formed by the Salem City Council in 1976 as a neighborhood association, and whereas for the past 35 years, this association has served as an excellent example of how an organization provides an active, open forum for neighbors to understand city issues and advocate for improvements, and whereas the mayor and city council is honored to celebrate the 35th anniversary of the Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association, now therefore I, not Anna Peterson, I, Laura Tesler, not mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim 2011 as Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association's 35th anniversary. Yay! Let's have a round of applause. And I'd like everybody to note that this is a real seal from the city of Salem. Unfortunately, not real gold. Would you like to say a couple of comments?
Thank you very much for this recognition, Mayor Peterson and Counselor Tesler. I would also like to say on behalf of the Neighborhood Association how much we appreciate all the work of the city staff. Without the city staff, we wouldn't be able to do most of the things that we do. They help us mobilize our resources, and they provide a lot of the manpower, so to speak, behind the things that we do in the neighborhood, and that's very important. So we really appreciate the work of the staff, who are always very energetic and very pleasant, and it makes our job fun.
And I'd like to echo that. And it's comforting and reassuring to know that on every second Thursday for the last 35 years, we have provided an open forum for any citizen in our neighborhood to come and ask questions, challenge policies, debate issues, and be heard, and it will go on, as far as I know, for quite a while. So every second Thursday at 7:00, we are open for business. And I also really appreciate the city police, and Anna's been there, Laura's been there, and so we can get all the information where the rubber hits the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will be all.
Thank you. And where do you meet? We want to be sure people know, the second Thursday of every month.
We meet on the corner of 19th and Mill Street, Southeast Wesleyan Church.
And during the summer, we pick parks to meet at. Okay. 19th and Mill Street at the...
Wesleyan Church.
Wesleyan Church.
Yeah, Capitol.
And then in the summer, in the parks. That's excellent. Thank you very much. Congratulations. I know you both worked very, very hard for years, and I appreciate all of the service that you've brought to the city. Thank you. Our next agenda item is reports of boards, commissions, committees, and presentations by outside agencies. And I believe we have to speak Levi Herrera Lopez from the SSAB. He's going to be introducing Anita Padilla from the Salem Outreach Shelter director. Levi, would you like to come forward to the podium, state your name and your address for the record and the ward where you reside? And then introduce... Okay.
Good evening. My name is Levi Herrera. My address, 3850 Portland Road, and I'm not sure what the ward is.
Five.
Probably is five.
Five. There we go.
And I'm here tonight as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board, and I'm here to introduce Anita Padilla, who is with the YWCA Salem Outreach Shelter, and she's going to share with you some information about the wonderful work that they do, and so I want to yield my time to her.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. And again, I'm Anita Padilla. I'm the director of the YWCA Salem Outreach Shelter, and good evening to Mayor Peterson and the city council members. We reside at 2933 Center Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon, Suite 200. Thank you for letting me come here tonight and share about our shelter. Salem Outreach Shelter has been helping people that are homeless since 1988. We're able to house up to 14 families, and they can stay four to six months. Since we have hired a half-time case manager in addition to our full-time case manager, we've been able to increase our housing from seven to 10 families to full capacity. This increase is from... This increase is from about 60 to 72 families per year. Even at full capacity, we still have about 35 people on our wait list at any given time. Recently, we have had a family come to the shelter directly from living on the streets. They've been living in their cars, and they had one young child. Shortly after coming to the shelter, the husband decided to leave his wife, Amy, and their child at the shelter, and he returned to his old life and relapsed to drugs and alcohol and tried to commit suicide. And then shortly after that, his father, Amy's father-in-law, passed away. With all these obstacles in her life, she was devastated. This was really hard for many addicts and would cause most of them to relapse, but she chose not to let this ruin her life. While at the shelter, she enrolled in Shemecata Community College to work towards her human resources degree. Amy applied and was hired at a mentoring position working at a recovery house for women in Dallas. She was also offered an $1,800 scholarship from Sir Optimus of Salem to help her with their schooling. She will receive that next month in April. Amy has taken a negative situation, turned it around. Amy is growing and thriving in a new town with a new job, and she credits her success largely to the shelter and the shelter staff. Hers is just one of numerous families that the Salem Outreach Shelter has been able to help due to the funds of the Community Development Block grant. These are not just people. They are families that are down on their luck. It could be someone you know. It could be your brother or your sister's family. It could be your son or your daughter's family, or it could be yours. CDBG funds are used to help pay for our case managers' salaries, and without them, we could not help these families. We hope to provide families with new skills that will enable them to remain self-sufficient and stable after they move out of the shelters. Did you know that according to the 2010 one-night shelter count, that there was about 1,272 homeless students, just in Marion County alone? This is why we asked you to continue to provide the YWCA Salem Outreach Shelter with your funding resources, because there is a desperate need to continue to help shelter the homeless in our community. Thank you for giving me time to update you about the Salem Outreach Shelter. Is there any questions?
Do counselors have any questions for Ms. Padilla?
No. Okay. Thank you very much.
We thank you very much for coming down this evening, and I certainly agree with you, the homelessness issue in our community is serious, and it's something that we certainly appreciate the work that the SOS Shelter is doing to try in one way to help that. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Counselor Claussen. Oh. Yes, Counselor Clem?
Excuse me. Counselor Claussen.
Can I make one quick comment?
Yes, certainly.
It's a personal comment, but I wanted everybody here to know that there's an event going on tomorrow night that I think most of the counselors know about and hopefully are attending. It's going to be at North Salem High School between 6:30 and 8:30. It's a community forum at which all of our local governments are getting together. The executives are all presenting a quick snapshot of what next year's budget is going to be, and this is going to be a great opportunity for public to be able to go in and listen to all the governments that affect you. So the governments that are going to be there are City of Salem, City of Kaiser, Marion County, Polk County, Marion Transit, Marion... Let's see. Am I getting that right? Cherry's? There we go. How about that? Salem-Kaiser Public Schools and Shemecata Community College. As you all know, we all are going to be in budget talks here soon that are not looking real good, and this is going to be an interesting thing that I would really love to see a lot of public attend just to get the information out there and understand what's going on with all our local governments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your leadership to really put that together. I think that's going to be a great service to our community. Thank you. We now move on to public comment. No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak in this section of the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the consent calendar with additions and with polls, 4.2D.
D is in dog?
D is in dog.
Thanks. Okay.
No reflection on that item. It's actually...
No. I didn't mean that.
4.3I, which is the legislative report. That's it.
That's it. All right. A motion has been made by Counselor Bennett to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of the two polls, 4.2D and 4.3I. Is there any discussion?
I'll second.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Tesler has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And we'll go to special orders of business to address the pulled agenda items. Counselor Bennett, would you like to open the discussion, present those?
Yes, Madam Mayor. 4.2D was your poll. Would you like to make a motion on that? I can't remember exactly what the motion was.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right. I make a motion asking that staff return with a revised resolution to create the Fifth Division for Administrative Costs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that staff would return to make the revised resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. I'm sorry. I needed to call for discussion. I apologize.
If you could, help me understand the reason for your motion and exactly what it is. I think we talked about it a little bit earlier, but I guess I want to make sure I understand what we're deleting or what we're changing from the staff recommendation.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
The gist of my motion came because I support the city creating a fifth allocation The gist of my motion came because I support the city creating a fifth allocation, a fifth functional division in the Cultural and Tourism Fund to separate the administrative costs from the other services that are performed by the city. I personally, as mayor, I don't support creating a percentage of funding for collaborative promotional grants. And so my motion is that that would be deleted, that the staff would come back with the motion just to cover that portion of the resolution that has to do with the administrative costs. Was there any other discussion? No? Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion regarding the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. I believe we move on to 4.3I.
Madam Mayor? I move that we accept the City Council... or the report from the Legislative Committee with the exception of Senate Bill 766, which is listed as... is asking the council to approve opposition. I would ask that we send that back to the Legislative Committee for further review. This is a very complicated issue, and I think...
Second.
Thank you. This is a complicated issue that really deserves further discussion. I think we made our decision without full knowledge of the facts, and we'll be meeting tomorrow and be able to return to the council with a recommendation at our next meeting.
Okay, fine. It has been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clem to remove this from the legislative report and to return it to the Legislative Committee for further discussion. Is there any discussion? Yes. Counselor Jeff James?
In the report, the staff report regarding the Legislative Committee's recommendations, House Bill 3150 authorizes cities with a population exceeding 100,000 to designate speeds on highways under specified circumstances. There are 19 neighborhood associations and 19 land use chairs. The 19 land use chairs meet monthly in City Hall, and I've heard a concern from the Chair of the Committee that we need to discuss this item because some of the neighborhood associations feel that they need to be able to have input on what speeds are on city streets in certain neighborhoods where there's special circumstances. So I'd like for this to be deferred until the next meeting, which I think is in about a week of the, what's called the Land Use Network. It's all the neighborhood associations meeting together in City Hall. If that's possible, unless this is urgent, this has to proceed, I would like the neighborhood associations to have some input on House Bill 3150.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett, did you want...
Counselor Tesler will make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Tesler?
Yeah, I can make that motion, I think.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. I would like to make a substitute motion, and I would like to make this substitute motion. I would move that Senate Bill 766 go back to committee, and I would also move that House Bill 3150 go back to committee.
Second.
Madam... Discussion?
Yes, discussion?
Madam Mayor, we've already acted on 766, so I just ask that we... we've already sent it back, but I... what I hear you asking for, Counselor, is send this one back to committee as well. Do I understand that right?
Correct. Okay. It's... So you're revising your revised motion?
I just want to clarify what we're doing, which her motion was. I think she actually was confining it to 3150, because we've... haven't we already acted on...
Yes. Oh, we haven't?
I don't believe we've voted.
You haven't yet, okay.
The substitute motion is appropriate.
Well, I would... okay, I'll speak in opposition to the motion. I think we're prepared to send 766 back. I think there is substantial collected information for the committee to consider in its discussion on Senate Bill 766. The committee's gone over House Bill 3150 and whether or not it wants to deal with a street-by-street council action on speed limits in this city and have it analyzed in each case by city staff and decided it is opposed to that. I would just suggest sending it back to committee is probably not gonna result in a change of position by the committee.
Counselor Clausen?
I'd speak too. I would agree on 766 to send that back to committee. Wasn't part of that discussion, but it is a complicated one. House Bill 3150, Transportation Director Mark Bechtel had some good points on that too. The current system works very well in that we have a third-party body, and maybe Peter can help me if I get the term wrong, but there's a body that we send speed limits and roads and analysis of these roads out to at the state. They do a completely objective, third-party review of that street and the traffic and what goes on on the street, and then they come back and they tell us what the speed limit needs to be. They tell the City of Salem. Our problem is gonna be exactly what Counselor Bennett said. If we... if this law passes, we're gonna get an appeal every single week on a street speed limit, and we don't wanna be doing that here in council. It's gonna be a huge load for our staff, because our staff is gonna be asked to be doing research on the streets and studies, and we don't have the engineering services to do that where the state does. And it's a good system that's set up now. I don't think it's something that we as council wanna take on, or city staff. So I would speak in opposition to the substitute motion.
Thank you. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish I felt the same way, but I've been down to ODOT Speed Board hearings three times to take... to plead that they lower the speed limit on some streets to include Highway 22, which is the highway of death, and they just removed the safety corridor. So I would agree that they do an objective, third-party evaluation. I would not agree that they've got it figured out perfectly. I'm not sure I would support this bill the way it's written, but I don't... I can't vote to oppose it simply because I've been down there and learned that they set the speed limit for how the street was designed, and more cars faster is how a lot of streets are designed, particularly arterials. And people can't pull out onto Wallace or Edgewater because they've turned into highways. And so not so much the neighborhoods, but in fact, the residents have gotta have some ability to petition that. And time after time, I saw that the Speed Board was basically an engineering... what was it designed for? That's how we set the speed limit. It did not take into consideration school zones, but not school zone, but school walking areas and specific crossing areas. So I'll tell ya, I wish I could agree that the Speed Board worked what I thought was perfectly, but they don't. And I would like the Legislative Committee to understand what maybe the League of Oregon City's position is, or take a look at some of the petitions that the city has filed to have ODOT change the speed limit, because it's a tough process. And I'm not sure that it's the one that we wanna live with forever and ever. Right now, getting the speed zone lowered on Orchard Heights Road and a couple of other major arterials in the city, there's so much of a struggle with the Speed Board that the staff and the city just give up and we accept what ODOT tells us. So I'd like to see the process at least changed. It's not perfect, but changed. And if this bill allows us the opportunity to voice that concern, I think we should examine it a little bit more thoroughly.
Okay. Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Tesler.
Yeah, I just wanna say, when I read through this, I had... I have really, really mixed feelings about this. I completely understand the burden that this would put on our Public Works Department, and I don't like that. The cost to the city could be more than we're able to handle, and I don't like that. But I do, as Counselor Clem said, I do like that that gives us some control. I mean, we have situations, for example, we have intersections... Mission and 25th is a good example. It's ODOT-controlled. It's right in the middle of our city, and we can't do anything about it. And so this is one place where we will have a little more control over our own jurisdiction. But having said that, I have really mixed feelings about it, so I just... I'm just gonna be... I don't say... couldn't say I'm neutral on it, but I can't... I can't support it one way or another. But I do have one question, because the staff report here, the legislative report doesn't say... Does this actually disband the ODOT Committee if this went through? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
No, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. No, the Speed Control Board would still be in place.
And would it still function the same way?
I believe that it would. I think there are certain circumstances under which HB 3150 gives city councils the opportunity to make decisions about speeds, but I don't think it's every circumstance.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. That's helpful information. Okay. Let's see, Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I'm going to come right up and echo Counselor Clem's comments, but I'd also like to bring two other factors into the discussion, and that is basically that we have to protect our pedestrian bicycling public in this city. We have to. And this bill finally is taking into account that people use roads to ride their bikes on and walk across and walk around. And, you know, the automobile is king, and I recognize that, but we have to take into effect our other populations that do use our roadways. And this is another tool in the neighborhood box for neighborhoods to take a look and see what's not working in their neighborhood. And, you know, anytime we have the opportunity to take back sovereignty from the state and govern ourselves, I think we should take advantage of it. So I would strongly be opposed to the position that we have taken on this bill. I think that we should support it. I think it's probably gonna pass, and you might as well be on the winning side.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to check a couple of things on this, just to understand. Would we... would the city gain control over speed limits on Highway 22 west of the city?
I don't believe so.
What are the speed limits on Wallace? What's the speed limit on Wallace? Mark, does Mark...
I don't recall.
Mark Bechtel, Parks and Transportation Services Manager. Actually, Wallace Road starts out, I believe, at around 35 miles an hour, and as you get closer to the city limits, increases to... by the time you're going towards Dayton and Amity, you're at 55 miles an hour, which is the basic rule for a rural highway.
And then, would this give us control over 25th and Mission? Would we be able to control those? Because I think each of them pointed out... I'm just wondering if we would gain control of these speed limits?
No, Counselor, HB 3150 is very specific to giving cities the ability to lower speed limits on residential low-volume streets that only 5 mile an hour lower, so they could be lowered to 20 miles an hour. And you would have to designate that street as a neighborhood greenway, acknowledge that there's bicycle and pedestrian facilities on that street, and put up appropriate signage to do that. So it... this bill is somewhat limiting to the kind of powers a city would gain. Senate Bill 344 would give cities much more broader powers to lower their speed limits. But this particular bill, which has already passed the House and has now been referred to the Senate, HB 3150 does limit the amount of control the city has. I would only comment that you would probably see a lot of neighborhoods wanting to have a lot of neighborhood greenways designated in their neighborhoods, and so that would require a lot of staff effort to sort through all that.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. That's helpful. Senator... Who was... excuse me. Counselor Bennett? Sorry, I just elevated you...
I was just waiting for the paycheck.
I just elevated you to a senator. Would you like to be a state senator or a U.S. senator?
Yeah. Yeah. Mark, I wanted to just check again, then, to just clarify what you're saying. We would not gain, under this bill, any control over arterials, primary streets, whatever the designations are. This is... this would be like Chemeckata, which has a bicycle route along it. Is that correct?
You are correct. There are three criteria that I remember. One is they have to be in a residential street, essentially. They have to have less than 2,000 vehicles per day, and then they must go through a speed study that says that the 85th percentile speed is 35 mile an hour or less. So that would begin to eliminate pretty much all of your... well, it would eliminate all of your arterials, most of your collector streets, and would only remain residential streets. It would then create some residential streets that are 25 and some that are 20. So you do have a consistency issue then at that point.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the additional clarification, Counselor Bennett and Mr. Bechtel, because that's not reflected in the staff report. So I would refer... I would still support referring it back to the Legislative Committee, so the explanation that's been additionally offered can be included in here before the council votes on it. I think our record should be clear on why we opposed or supported something. At best, I think even with compelling evidence, I would be neutral on it, simply because I do wanna support neighborhood greenways, and maybe we just need to start figuring out how to do that stuff. So I would still support the substitute motion, simply because the staff report should or could have some additional information in it.
Substitute, okay. All right, thank you. Counselor Dickey?
So just another question for clarification. Senate Bill 344 is something different than this one? Because it has some... it has some more specifics in it. Is it the same one that's been kicked over to the Senate? Can you...
Well, first of all, House Bill 3150 was amended very recently, and in fact, it may have been amended since the Legislative Committee of the council gave its opinion or recommendation, which is one reason why you may not see a complete consistency in the staff report. Senate Bill 344 has not gone into... it has not left committee in the Senate, and it is a bill that would give cities much broader powers on streets to lower their speed limits.
Are there other questions? Okay, we'll now consider the substitute motion, and the substitute motion was made by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Clem. And that motion... Council, would you help me with this, please?
It would refer both bills back to the Legislative Committee for further review.
Okay. The substitute motion would refer both of these bills back to council's Legislative Committee for further consideration.
But move all the rest of them forward. That's correct.
Yes, that's correct. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion... the substitute motion carries. Thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is the Travel Salem 2011 to 2014 Strategic Plan, and Angie Morris is here tonight. Staff, would you present the Travel Salem... would you please present and introduce Travel Salem's Director? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sean O'Day, Deputy City Manager. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce this matter for you. By way of background, on September 19th, 2006, the city entered into a contract with Travel Salem, then known as the Salem Visitor and Convention Association, SCVA, to provide tourism and marketing services. Under that contract, Travel Salem is to submit a strategic plan to the council for your approval every three... your approval every three years, and that strategic plan is to define Travel Salem's strategies for promoting Salem for conferences, conventions, seminars, and general tourism with the transient occupancy tax revenues that the city provides to Travel Salem under that contract. In addition, the strategic plan is to identify ways to measure Travel Salem's effectiveness in achieving that goal, specifically its effectiveness in its activities that promote Salem for conventions, conference, seminars, or for general tourism, partnership development, the estimated economic impact of Travel Salem's activities, and the enhancement and leveraging of the transient occupancy tax funds that it receives. This evening, you have Angie Morris, the President and CEO of Travel Salem, who's gonna be walking you through the strategic plan for the next three years. And again, this evening, the presentation will culminate with your action on whether or not to approve that plan as presented.
Thank you very much. Angie Morris, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm delighted to be here with you this evening to share Travel Salem's vision for the next three years, as outlined in our 2011-2014 Strategic Plan. The objectives and strategic initiatives presented in this plan are general in scope to allow the organization to be nimble and flexible in its approach. The strategic plan will be executed through annual business plans that provide specific tactical detail on how results will be achieved. I believe that 1112 business plan and budget was included in your packet, so you could see how the strategic plan influences the annual business plan. The strategic plan outlines five major areas of focus. The first, community relations and engagement, addresses Travel Salem's commitment to strategic partnerships, community building and advocacy, and results-oriented support for local businesses. Travel Salem will utilize broad engagement to shape industry dialogue, develop key-defining principles, and a data dashboard to provide a meaningful and standardized platform for sharing industry information, and will continue work to build and enhance regional partnerships. The second focus area is capacity building, which is oriented around long-term, stable funding and the tools necessary for organizational growth centered on effective, efficient, and outcomes-based programs. The third focus area is marketing and communications, which is a primary driver of Travel Salem's key performance measurements. The strategic plan calls for concerted efforts in brand development, industry partnerships, and integrated marketing channels, including traditional advertising, social media, public relations, and website development. In addition, we will seek to expand the visitor information network, leverage green messaging strategies, and update the Salem area visitor profile. The consumer drives all of Travel Salem's marketing decisions, with research showing that the impetus for visitors traveling to the Salem area, what compels them to come here, are experiences centered around culinary, recreation, and cultural heritage activities. However, we package up these central pillars with many other categories, including retail, lodging, and family activities, for instance, to create a full-service destination. This comprehensive program takes advantage of a regional marketing approach that delivers results for Salem. The fourth focus area of the strategic plan is conventions and events, which works to secure high-yield, citywide business opportunities. This program is also a primary driver of Travel Salem's key performance measurements. The strategic plan stresses online communication strategies and cooperative marketing opportunities to reach meeting planners and influence their decisions. In addition, we will seek to expand sports business and emerging niche markets as well. Travel Salem will work to develop reciprocal regional partnerships to keep business in the Mid Willamette Valley, so we can take advantage of overflow from other markets and possibly ensure a future spot in the rotation of a group. Marketing Salem as a green destination is a critical branding position that we will leverage, as well as engaging with key industry partners such as the Salem Area Lodging Association and the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. The final focus area, services, is the fulfillment arm of the convention and events program, providing the information and resources necessary to support group needs. The work of this program area helps recruit new business and ensures repeat business through our distinctive service brand, which is a strategic and thoughtful approach to customer service excellence. Travel Salem has a reputation for going above and beyond in customizing our group services, which serves to differentiate, differentiate us from our competition. Travel Salem is committed to its role as an economic development generator for the city. Tourism creates jobs and enhances Salem's quality of life. Our work is results-oriented, as reflected in the three key performance measurements, which include estimated economic impact, transient occupancy tax, and leverage. These three indicators help provide a sense of the overall economic health of the region's tourism industry. These performance measurements should be considered alongside other measurements, such as financial resources and market conditions. Travel Salem's work benefits all Salem businesses, not just tourism businesses, and helps generate transient occupancy taxes, lottery funds, gas taxes, and property taxes when visitors convert into residents. We are focused on tourism, economic development, and its ripple effect on the greater economy. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you today about the 1114 Strategic Plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Morris? Yes, Councilor Jeff James?
I just want to compliment Angie and Travel Salem, just on the quality of the contents of the document, but also the way you presented it. It's just a stunning presentation document, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilor Bennett, would you like to make a motion regarding the Travel Salem 2011 to 2014 Strategic Plan?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move acceptance of the Travel Salem 2011-2014 Strategic Plan.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Tesler to adopt the strategic plan as presented. Is there any discussion? Well, I actually would like to ask a few questions. Ms. Morris, would you mind coming back to the podium for us? Thank you. First, we appreciate the completeness of your report and the thoroughness of your preparation. I have a couple of questions, and I very much appreciate the time I had with you and your staff to really learn more about Travel Salem, as I recently visited with you. I have a couple of questions that have to do with your future planning. Are you planning any increases in staff?
Not at this time, no. We're not.
Okay. And are you planning any, any increases in salaries?
Not at this time, no.
Not at this time. Are you planning over the time of your budget in the next three years? Do you have a plan forward?
Regarding salary treatment in particular?
Regarding salaries or regarding staffing levels?
Yeah, so in regards to salary treatment, the organization has been flat for two years, and we plan on an annual basis, so there is no long-term strategy for salary treatment. There are a number of key areas in which we would envision adding staff, particularly in the convention and event program area. We have one full-time person selling the city's assets to convention meeting planners, compared to, for instance, Lane County, who has six dedicated staff people. So that would be one area in particular we would love to expand. We also don't have any administrative support at this time, so other staff members have absorbed those duties. So there are definitely ways that we would love to expand, but at this time, we don't have any plans to do so.
Don't have plans. So what is your current FTE?
Ten and a half FTE.
Ten and a half FTE, okay. My second area of question has to do with your board and the composition of the board and rotation on your board. I wonder if you could describe for us a little about that?
Sure. So Travel Salem has a 31-member Board of Directors. It's a regional board. There are nine appointed positions. Those include the Salem Conference Center, SED Core, Salem Chamber of Commerce, and a number, Oregon State Fair, and a number of others. The rest of the positions are elected positions by the board, and board members serve a three-year term with a maximum of three consecutive terms. So we are coming up for 1112. We will have, I believe, two or three positions rotating on the board at that time.
Okay. So nine years is the amount of time that most people would serve. I've been on a lot of boards myself, and usually it's three years with one re-up, and then you're kind of out the door, so I'm a little surprised by nine years. That's a, that's almost indentured servitude, isn't it?
Yes, yes. I would imagine that some of our board members would echo that, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you might think about that. And then I'm wondering about your officers and the rotation on your officers.
So officers can serve, and I apologize, because I don't, I'm trying to do this from memory. I can get you very specific information later, too. Officers can serve one-year terms and then can add a second year on, depending on the needs of the organization. A bylaws revision was made, I think, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, about two years ago, to do that. So officers can serve up to two years in, on the executive committee.
I see. Okay. And then at that time, they cycle off after two years?
And go back onto the full board.
Oh, onto the full board. I see. Okay. Okay. Are there other, other questions? Yes, Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Angie, one of the criticisms that occurs is, and we heard about it, I think, with the Welcome Center, I wanted to kind of use your strategic plan as an opportunity for you to speak to it, is Salem puts up over a half million dollars through the TOT tax for the operation. Does, and one of the questions that often arises is sort of, how can Salem put up so much money and we're sending people to Kaiser, Woodburn, Aurora, Silverton, Dallas? How do you balance that? How do you find that balance?
Sure, that's a great question. Thank you, Counselor. Travel Salem is charged to raise $3 for every $1 we bring in from the city. So for every dollar we get from the city, we need to find another $3. We do that through actual cash donations, or sponsorships, or memberships from outside partners, and we also do that through leverage, which are donated products and services. So the dollars that we receive from the city, which are the transient occupancy taxes, are, must adhere to the city charter restrictions, so those dollars can only be spent inside Salem city limits, to promote assets inside Salem city limits. So anything outside Salem city limits, which includes other portions of Salem, we have to raise money to promote those assets, and so that is what we do. So we have a partnership. We get some funding from Marion County, from Polk County. We have a membership program, and we do other types of revenue generation as well to provide those extra dollars.
Yes, Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. The other I want to ask about, and then just a comment after that, is sports business. That is really the lucrative business in Salem in terms of heads in beds, the arrival of people willing to rent a motel room and pay the transient occupancy tax. We have in our budget for TOT, I don't know, about $30,000 or so for that purpose. How much will you be adding to that program? And it's particularly softball has been amazingly successful here.
Yes, I believe, I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor. I believe the TOT dedicates about $36,000 annually to softball tournament bids, and at this time, we don't have any bid monies dedicated to securing additional sporting events. However, we do work with Oregon Sports Authority and others to identify those opportunities. So should an opportunity come up, then we would utilize our private dollars to supplement that. We do have an agility fund internally. We spent about $13,500 to secure the Jehovah Witness Convention, which brings about 15,000 people in annually. We just re-upped our contract with them for another three years. So, but we do, if in fact there is an opportunity that comes down and we don't have the financial resources, then we would come to the city council and the TOT board and request support and help if we, if we needed it.
Great. Just, and then just a kind of a general comment for, I guess, future reference for at least this Counselor, is one of the ongoing issues for the city is going to be availability of revenues, and transient occupancy tax represents one of our, you know, second-tier revenue sources, and there'll be tremendous pressure placed on that revenue resource for maintenance of other activities besides a, your activity. And so one of the, I guess, one of the things I'd be asking about in the future is actual dollar leverage, not column inches and their value, which are tremendously valuable to let the world know about Salem, but how, how much actual outside money besides tax money is being developed for the maintenance of this program? And I think that's going to become, just as a thought for you, and I'm on your board, so you and your board, is how are we going to meet that challenge, which is going to be, we got to find the money somewhere else as time passes and pressures grow. So I just bring that up.
Madam Mayor, may I comment?
Yes, certainly, please.
Counselor, that's a really good point, and one thing I'd like to share is that in the 1112 preliminary budget that we proposed, city funding is at 69% of our overall budget, so 31% of revenues are being driven from the outside. When I came on about four years ago, outside resources were less than 1% to 2%. So we've grown rather rapidly, and we're really proud of that work, but I do agree with you that there is more that needs to be done, and we are committed to leveraging the investment the city makes with Travel Salem to the highest degree possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, oh, excuse me, Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Angie, I just want to thank you and your board for doing a great job of turning it from just this sort of Salem-only approach to tourism, to turning it to a regionally-based approach tourism, because it really is about the region. Polk County is a proud player in it, Marion County, so it, you've really taken a diminishing situation with lower motel taxes being collected and actually been able to provide more services by doing that. So I would urge that you continue to do that, and hopefully we can keep those other partners involved with us. And everybody think about it regionally. It's a little weird when you're in a Polk County meeting and they're talking about the Dallas Tourism Bureau and the Salem Tourism Bureau, they're like 10 miles from each other. It doesn't make sense to do that. So when people are traveling by cars, they generally travel a region, so we need to keep a focus that it says Travel Salem, but it's really Travel the Mid Willamette Valley area. And I think the board does a great job with it.
Thank you, Councilor Clem. Any further questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Morris. We appreciate your coming. It's been moved and seconded to approve the strategic plan for the Travel Salem. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business on tonight's agenda, so we'll move to the information reports. Would any of the counselors like to address the information reports? Councilor Clem?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Ms. Woods, I apologize for not getting a hold of you ahead of time on Item 7C, the update on the Planning Division Long Range Planning Work Program. If I could, I want to make sure I understand what we're doing. I've got two new projects in planning, and we're dropping one, or we're delaying it. We're adding the Morningside Neighborhood Plan, and, which is like 35 years old, some, and we're also adding the Sustainable Cities Initiative South of Mission Study. I think the newspaper covered that. And to that degree, with the same number of staff, what we're doing was we're postponing the update to the comprehensive plan.
That's correct.
Okay, and my question is really not based on that, but I really want to try to make sure that I understand what all this change in staff priority is doing to two things that I think we need to finish up sooner than later. And one is the Neighborhood Center Mixed Use Zone, started over two years ago on that one with the Quest Reserve money allocated to it. So when it says it'll be completed by summer of 2011, does that mean in code, or does that just mean it'll come to council this summer?
No, I think council will get it before this summer. So it's in code, it's organized. We, we've been to the Planning Commission. They've made a recommendation. We've taken it back and tried to reformat it into the new UDC format and make sure that it makes absolute sense. We've done that work. The Planning Commission asked to see it again before we bring it to the council, which is the next step. So if all goes well at the Planning Commission... So, if all goes well at the Planning Commission, and we hope to do that within the next month, you'll be seeing it shortly.
Okay, because I think when redevelopment or development starts to recur, we really kind of want both the Unified Development Code and this Mixed-Use Zone. We still have property out there that's either zoned commercial, or some kind of commercial, or some kind of residential, and there's nothing in between, and so I'm really excited about, you know, once interest rates or the economy does come around, we want to be prepared with this Mixed-Use Zone because that'll provide sort of the flexibility developers are looking for, and the certainty that the neighbors are looking for. Where are we at in terms of the Unified Development Code? I wasn't understanding from the staff report what that timeline looked like.
I think actually, tonight, we asked that you appoint a representative, another representative to that group, so we're looking forward to having that person be appointed and active. And then Counselor Bennett also sits on that group. So, we had, that advisory committee meets every other week, and we've been pounding through that code, sometimes painfully, and we hope that by the end of summer or so, depending on how quickly they go, they'll be done with it, and then it'll move on to the official public hearing process.
And you're assuming the same level of planning FTE that you have now?
Yes.
To get this worked out?
Yes, yes, we're looking at keeping the same level of FTE that we have today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clem. I don't see any further questions on information reports, but, oh, Counselor Clausen?
Just a quick question on the, on the franchise agreement for cable television. So, we've postponed that a few times, it sounds like. If Comcast doesn't, doesn't get back to us by July 21st, we just postpone it again and keep the status quo until then, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Casey Duncan is our franchise administrator, so he'll address that question.
Thank you, Counselor Mayor. The answer to that question would be, the opportunity will be available to extend that for another one-hundred-and-eighty-day period if we so choose. I can tell you that we feel that the agreement we currently have in place is a good one for the city in a lot of respects, and that we're not necessarily being harmed in not having a new agreement in place and extending the one that we currently have.
So, you don't feel like there's any urgency why we need to get it, go into negotiations on this, but we're okay sitting there as it is for a little while?
I think the agreement we have right now is favorable, especially in comparison to what I expect the counterproposal from Comcast to be.
Okay, thank you, that was all.
Okay, thank you. I would like to ask City Manager Lyndon Norris, oh, thank you, Casey, to introduce our new airport administrator who is here with us tonight.
Yes, and Mark, if you could just come to the podium, this is Mark Junk, who's been with the airport now, how many weeks?
I'm going on week seven.
Seven, and I can tell you it has been seven very busy weeks for him, we're very pleased to have him from, most recently, the Spokane Airport. He has a wealth of experience, and we're so happy to have him here with the city.
Thank you very much.
So, I don't know, Mark, if you'd like to say anything?
Well, the airport has some fairly aggressive plans, and we'd like to carry those out. So, this master plan will get a lot of community involvement, we'll ask a lot of questions, and hopefully come up with a very good twenty-year plan for the airport and the surrounding businesses that are going to be out there.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and welcome to the city. We're very pleased that you've joined us, and we look forward to really moving ahead with our airport, both with air service and with the improvement of the facilities there, lengthening of the runway, and all of those things coming ahead, so we're happy to have you onboard. Okay, our public hearings, we'll now go to public hearings. Our first public hearing regards amendments to the current solid waste management franchise. The public hearing is now open, will the recorder please introduce it?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering amendments to the current solid waste management franchises to address solid waste management services during force majeure and emergency events.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
There is, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, I'm Casey Duncan, franchise administrator for the city, and it's my opportunity to present information with respect to the amendments under consideration this evening to the solid waste management franchises between the city of Salem and six franchise haulers represented by Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. This hearing is being conducted in conformance with Salem Revised Code Chapter forty-seven point zero nine one to receive public input on the amendments. The amendments to the franchise would add additional language which addresses emergency services, solid waste management services during emergency and force majeure events. In accordance with forty-seven zero nine one, the negotiations between the franchise and the city took place at the request of the franchisee, and we've come to terms discussing the need for the change, the technological feasibility of the change, and the economic impact of the change as required under code. So, solid waste management is not necessarily something that comes first to mind when thinking of emergency preparedness and response. However, as we've seen in recent events, a significant disaster involves a large quantity of debris that must be managed, taken to a proper location, disposed of, recycled, and the means must be in place to deal with these situations. Late last year, the franchise haulers approached the city with some language. The language was originally brought to them by Marion County after a disaster preparedness drill. Staff had some discussions between emergency preparedness staff with the county and the franchise haulers, and we've come to terms on the language before you this evening. If executed, this amendment will add two additional sections to the franchise agreements. The first, section twenty-four, relieves the parties of obligations under the franchise agreement with the delivery of proper notice when the party becomes incapable of performing the requirements under the franchise due to a force majeure event. Under the franchise, a force majeure event is defined as one which is outside the control of the franchisee or the city, and the terms or provisions related to force majeure also stipulate that the parties must, once again, perform the requirements under the franchise as soon as possible and act with speed and diligence to mitigate any disruptions or damage caused by the force majeure event. The second additional section, is section twenty-five, talks about emergency services. These services will be prioritized by the authority responsible for managing solid waste in an emergency event. If there is an event specific to Salem which doesn't involve opening a multi-agency coordination group in accordance with the National Incident Management System, then the city retains responsibility for oversight and direction of solid management resources, emergency resources such as drop boxes and the collection and, and delivery of those boxes. When the event's of significant scale to open up a multi-coordination agency, then the party responsible for coordinating those efforts will dictate the priority of emergency services. I'd like to state that this language is developed with the input and consent of emergency management personnel from both the city and Marion County, and input of the franchise haulers, and we believe that going through this process facilitated some valuable discussion with regard to the respective roles of the parties involved with post-emergency cleanup. And with that, it is staff's recommendation that the council authorize the city manager to execute amended agreement number two, to add language which would include force majeure and emergency service provisions to the franchise agreements. And that concludes my presentation, since staff's available for questions following public comment.
Thank you. We have no one signed up to speak for public comment on this issue. Are there any questions from council regarding this? Believe, I think Counselor Clausen was first, Counselor Tesler, and then Counselor Bennett. Did I miss anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Jeff James. All right, let's start with Counselor Clausen.
Thank you for the presentation, that was good. I was just curious, does the language, did it include anything? I mean, maybe this is outside of this agreement, but who pays for those emergencies? That the city ends up picking up the tab on those items? Is that included in this?
The agreement actually does stipulate that if, if the city requires priority service, then the city will become responsible for paying for those services according to our fee resolution that the city council has adopted. And I'm not completely familiar with the, the emergency cost recovery process, but if there is an actual disaster which is declared, then there are means available through the federal government and otherwise to, to pay for a portion of those costs for disaster cleanup.
Okay, yeah, so we would have, this probably speaks to a bigger emergency preparedness, but I'm looking at you, Randall, probably, because we would have the ability to go back and look for insurance payments, things like that, am I right? Because a big emergency could cost us a bunch of money for this type of item.
Well, it depends.
Okay.
Which is typical. In a, in a bit of a, an emergency of the scale that would require the implementation of this agreement, most likely we'd be looking to the federal government for cost recovery.
We have cost accounting procedures in place that we've used on other incidents, that when we realize we're in one of those situations, we keep very close track of all of the costs and then have, submit those, and in the past, we've been very successful in having cost recovery.
Okay. I believe Counselor Tesler was next.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a quick comment, but, you know, we just had an almost natural disaster here in Oregon. I mean, we almost had, well, we did have a tsunami in some places in our state. It seems kind of silly to think about this right now, but if we did have an actual disaster, an earthquake, or flood, or something like that, these are the kind of things that preserve, you know, our way of life in a disaster. So, I'm really happy to see that you are doing emergency management planning, because it's really important to do that, because, you know, you could have disaster happen tomorrow, so you don't, I mean, you don't think about solid waste until you have a disaster, and then you have a real problem. So, good job.
And we do have a very comprehensive emergency plan. If council would like us to, we'd be happy to do a work session on that at some point, so you are more familiar with it.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
I don't have any.
Oh, all right, Counselor Jeff James.
Counselor?
Yes.
Yeah, as Counselor Tesler just said, we're probably going to get, well, we will be getting a level nine earthquake here in the Willamette Valley. It happens every three-hundred-and-fifty years, the archaeologists, so the geologists say. The last one was three-hundred-and-fifty years ago, so anytime now, we've seen the video of Japan, subduction zone earthquake off the Oregon coast is going to have a drastic effect. Every building in Salem will be damaged. City Hall probably will pancake, just like you've seen the video of Haiti, and hopefully nobody will be in it when that happens, until we can have the money to retrofit and seismically reinforce this structure. I'm just afraid of what's going to happen. So, but the draft ordinance says, okay, Salem, all the roads are blocked, the city hall is gone, but a letter needs to be written and delivered, hand-delivered, to the city from the garbage company. I just imagine somebody trying to hand-write something down on scrap paper and trying to stumble over the rubble and get it to somebody in the city's emergency location, wherever that is, some fire station somewhere that may or may not be operating. So, I just wonder about the practicality of requiring a written letter in such a circumstance.
In, in those type of circumstances that you describe, the city manager has the authority and the council does in some sorts of situations to declare an emergency, that we would suspend normal procedures, and so I'm not concerned that that would be an issue. You know, likely, we would not be talking about that kind of dire circumstance when we would need this, but if we, if it was, we have ways of dealing with that.
And if I may, I would also like to point out, under the agreement, section twenty-five point three, at the end, it says that notice under the emergency services section may be given to the franchisee by any means practicable under the circumstances. So, in that case, it would not have to be hand-delivered written notification.
Thank you. Okay, are there any further questions for Mr. Duncan? All right. The public hearing is now closed. Counselor Bennett, would you make motion regarding amendments to the current solid waste management franchise to address the solid waste management, manages, management services during the force majeure and emergency events?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Seconded by Diana Dickey. Thank you, it was moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to approve the staff.
Counselor Dickey.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Dickey, to approve, to approve the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our second public hearing is regarding establishment fees, establishing fees and charges for parking services. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and City Councilors, sorry. My name is Sarah Bratcher, and I am the Parking Policy and Downtown Project Manager with the City of Salem. I'm here in reference tonight to the public hearing on the 2011 parking fee schedule.
No, that's fine.
Tonight, you'll hear a presentation given by Rick Williams of Rick Williams Consulting. Mr. Williams has worked with the City of Salem since 2006 in collecting parking data and presenting an annual parking utilization study to the Downtown Advisory Board. In 2010, staff engaged Rick Williams Consulting to develop a series of parking management recommendations to improve the efficiency of sitting parking resources. The Downtown Advisory Board was presented with the parking management recommendations in conjunction with the annual parking utilization study. These recommendations were then incorporated into the Downtown Strategic Action Plan adopted by the Urban Renewal Agency Board on February fourteenth, 2011. At this time, I would like to introduce Rick Williams, who will be giving an overview of the management recommendation which was applied in the proposed parking permit fees before you this evening, and that is managing the sale of parking permits by demand as opposed to an allocation of physical spaces.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you tonight. My name's Rick Williams, I'm the principal of Rick Williams Consulting. And as Sarah mentioned, over the last four years since adoption of the 2006 parking plan by the City Council, we've been fortunate enough to work with staff and the DAB on annual updates of the, the parking system. What happened in, in 2010 is we recognized a recurring pattern that's been occurring in the parking system, is that our data shows that there's space available in some of the garages, but the data from Parking Division is that the, there's no parking available. And what we've come to understand is that Salem has a traditional history of allocating a certain number of permits to a garage as an attempt, a very well-intended way to keep space available for customers. But what we find is that once the annual allocation of permits are sold, the garages are deemed at capacity, and our data is showing that there's actually space available. And so, what is that, what that's led us to is, one, a recognition that we need two things. One is to move the garages more, as Sarah said, to a performance-based system of parking management, and also a performance-based system of how to allocate rates in garages, and then move towards, over time, a rate-setting policy that recognizes that. And the performance-based system of parking is really an industry best practice, and it's reflected in a lot of municipal parking systems around the country that I've been involved with, and it's also reflected in a lot of private, most private management, parking facility management programs. We also noticed that it's been difficult over time to determine what rates should be, and so this recommendation, and I think Sarah's recommendation on the rates that are in front of you, are a movement in that direction. And basically, there's really two basic premises that we're working on. One, again, is that the parking rate allocation become rate, become performance-based, which is a combination of the demand in the garages and the relationship of the, the use of the garages by area of the downtown. But also, over time, moving towards a system that begins to consider the normal costs of operations in the rate setting as well. For instance, the on-street permits, daily permits that have been sold, rates haven't gone up in quite some time, but the cost of allocating, managing, and providing those permits to the public has gone up, and so we want to move towards a system that begins to align that better. We think at the end of the day, the rate system that you have will be more reasonable, the rates will still be reasonable, I should say, but you'll have better cost recovery in your system, and at the end of the day, you'll be able to maximize the use of the facilities beyond where they are now, so that when the garages are truly at capacity, we can look, we can take the demand data, and we can take the allocation of permits and put them together and realize that they are fully maximized, and you're getting the most out of the system that you can. So, with that, I would turn it back to Sarah. So with that, I would turn it back to Sarah.
In closing, before you this evening, is approval consideration of staff recommendation for the 2011 parking permit fees. And following any public comment, both staff and Rick Williams are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have someone signed up this evening for public comment on this issue. Suzanne Lulay is here this evening. Suzanne, would you please come to the podium and state your name and address and the ward, or the ward where you reside? You have three minutes. There's a light on the podium. When you see the yellow light, you have one minute left. And when the red light comes on, that means you've reached your three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Suzanne Lulay. I live at 2325 Rural Avenue Southeast, and that is in Ward 2. So I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the parking fees, and I apologize, I did not have time to pull the report to read it through. But I did have a great conversation with Sarah earlier last week in regards, and specifically to the Pringle Park Plaza parking area. When I was here before you took over for us this year, I commented that I am a five-year permit holder at the Pringle Park Plaza. And in the five years that I have been there, I started out at $35 for my parking fee, and it went up to 40, and then it went up to 45, and then it went up to 50. And we were looking at an increase to 70, and I went ballistic, because that is just not within my budget to do. Now, I understand, and if the document, if I had read it, it should be at 55 for Pringle Plaza, is that correct? I'm hoping it's at 55 in your document.
I think staff would have the answer for you on that.
So while she's looking that up, I will continue on, since my clock is ticking.
Yes, I know.
When Sarah asked me if that was agreeable to me, I told her that that was agreeable to me, but again, it's not agreeable to me, because each year, my rates have went up $5 for the parking fee. I'd like to see a year-a-buy for the Pringle Park Plaza. I did, Sarah, do you have the answer to that, 55?
Full-time is $55, and so it's being proposed this evening.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to see a year-a-buy on Pringle Park Plaza. I don't know what the other parking facilities are doing, but I'd like to see a year-a-buy, because we've been going up $5 a year for the last three years. I also asked Sarah very specifically, is a $5 increase or an increase going to be part of staff's recommendation every year as we go forward? She told me no. So if we go up this year, I'm hoping next year, that that no really is the answer, that they will not recommend that Pringle Park Plaza goes up. So I'm holding her to her truth and word and her integrity. And the city to theirs. So I know that we've got 482 spaces in that parking complex. There were currently 257 spaces that were permit parking, and Sarah told me that you're going to be able to increase another 68 spaces. Yahoo, that is from conversations with the convention center, I understand. So I'm hoping that is also accurate, because again, I did not read the report. I'm going by what Sarah and I talked about. She also told me that you have contracts with the conference center, with some meter parking, there's some ADA parking, and with Salmon Run, that don't expire. Those contracts don't expire, I was told. That seems odd to me that the city would ever enter into a contract that didn't expire. So I'm hoping that the conversations they had with the conference center means that they do. So thank you. I appreciate staff's time and going back and doing that. A year-a-buy, or don't raise it next year, please.
Thank you for coming down. We appreciate your time. Are there any questions for Ms. Lulay from the counselor members? Okay. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Are there any questions from council from, for staff? Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember that, I remember seeing the $20 fee increase in Pringle Parkade and wondering why so much. And it looks like staff has recommended the increase be reduced to only $5. So if, Sarah, could you help me? It says that the permit holders have had a phased increase over the last, past three years. And so that leads me to believe that there have been several increases. But I have two basic questions. What were those increases and when? And, or how much, I guess? And are we looking at doing parking increases every year or every other year? I mean, what's our, what's sort of our looksee window for parking fees?
Sure. An answer to your first question with respect to the Pringle Parkade, what was approved by council three years ago, well, technically, I guess it would be four years ago, was phased increases of $5. So it was in $5 increments, starting at $35, or, yeah, 35, 45, 50. Then we did 50. Now we're going into the 55. The recommendation from Rick Williams, which he briefly spoke upon this evening, was that we would look at our parking resources on an annual basis. So we would look at what is going on in our parking, what are the demands, what are the usages, and then come back to you annually with that information, and then recommendations based on what the usage has been.
Okay. So we are looking at this annually. I'm not sure I'm crazy about that, but I guess we told you to. So the issue with Pringle Park, it's not part of the parking district, so it's uniquely different than the other parking structures. Is this a sort of a catch-up to have it pay its fair share because it doesn't pay into the parking fund?
I would have to say that's a yes and a no. Pringle went 14 years without having any sort of an increase. So when the $5 a year phased increase that you just referred to was brought to council, that was the first increase they had seen. What you're seeing is not so much as a catch-up over the last 15 years, but rather, it's a looking at what our current demand is, what our usages are, and moving forward.
So we have a ton of people that want spots in Pringle.
Yes.
122. And that same spot over at the Liberty Plaza is $70. Is that what?
That is correct.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd like to understand this, too. If I understood what was being said, we are heading toward actual cost of owning or operating the parking structures. Is that what we're heading toward?
Well, I, a little more clarification, please, if you don't mind.
How much does it cost to maintain one parking spot per month?
And I'm going to hand this over to Shuri.
And I mean that in the broadest sense. I mean, the value of the building, the cost of, of somebody to patrol it, to take care of the building over time, all of it. Do we know?
I can answer that question by saying that the revenues that are generated are not sufficient to pay for the cost. That is something that has been recommended in Rick's recommendation for what we evaluate, and we will be coming back to you in the future, because we are going to undertake that evaluation, the value of the parking district, the cost of a parking space and our parking resources.
So that's where we're headed. We're going to actually charge people who use public, publicly-owned parking structures the cost of a place to park?
The goal of the Downtown Advisory Board is to understand the cost of free parking, and they've asked us to evaluate the parking district and how we price our resources. This is a first step in us understanding and implementing the recommendations that have been proposed, based on four years of looking at raw data.
Okay. I just wanted to, I don't know, the, I look at these prices, and they are so low. And I understand for somebody who had 35 bucks a month for, you know, a generation practically, that these are a shocking increase. But these are a third of what most of us are paying for uncovered surface parking, parking in the core of the city. This is a very high, it appears to be, from just somebody who buys from a private landowner, a highly subsidized price that puts us into a competitive, in competition with a private landowner, really pretty unfair. I mean, we are a bargain. So I, I just applaud that you're taking this on. I hope there was no agreement that this won't happen annually.
There was not. The conversation was just that it would be reviewed annually, and I, other than that, there wasn't any other information I could give until we get to December of next year. Then we'll be looking at it again.
It's expensive to park. I mean, and this, this is pretty high-quality parking. I wanted to thank you very much for including a monthly surface parking, street parking pass. I really appreciate that. We've talked about this quite a bit, but that the convenience of the daily pass was beginning to wear on people that I know purchasing the daily pass and the monthly was looking pretty good. So I really appreciate you having those done. I think that's a really, I think there'll be a market for those. I guess we'll find out.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We want to provide the best service that we can, and now that we have the legislative sessions each year, I think that this will be a better tool for them to use for parking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Claussen?
So I should start by saying I know nothing about parking downtown. This is all jumping into the fire for me. I don't go downtown a whole lot. I've been finding a lot more reason to do it with being on council. And I've got a young family, so we just don't make it down there much. But the monthly on-street parking, I just want to, so that's, if you have that pass, you don't have to pay the meter. Am I right on that? So it's not going to take away metered spots and make them into reserved spots for monthly parking downtown, correct? Or Capitol Mall, say, specifically on this one?
No, it's just another alternative to feeding the meter.
Okay. Good. That makes a lot more sense to me, and that sounds like a great option to have. And then I wanted to echo where Counselor Bennett was going with the parkades. It does concern me to have our general fund, or wherever the monies would be coming from, subsidizing the cost of those downtown structures, because I don't want to see those lapsing into disrepair as we get into worse and worse parking, or worse and worse budget problems. And we can't, that would be a blight on downtown real quick if we can't maintain it. So I really like the idea of looking at this for cost versus income, and see what we're doing, and making sure we're providing a competitive rate with what else is out there, what other options are out there, because we need to keep, keep our structures whole and sound.
Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in summary, with the staff report, it looks like Pringle goes up five a month, Marion goes up an average of five a month, Riverfront goes down $4 a month. I'm not sure that we're getting to what the cost of parking is there, but it sounds like, and then the on-street Capitol Mall goes up $2 a month. So if those four basic areas, three go up and one goes down, we're really still based upon market and income with regard to this recommendation. We have not gotten to the point yet where we're really looking at what the cost of parking is. But specifically, the parking leasehold fund and some of these other things, are they calculated in revenue? Because that goes some other place. Is the general fund subsidizing the parking fund?
The parking enforcement officers are paid for out of the general fund. The security staff that we provide in the downtown core are paid for by the parking fund. Last year, we had 150,000 of leasehold income that went towards the parking fund in order to have sufficient resources. And the Urban Renewal Agency has been contributing for capital improvements in the parking structures.
Okay. So the subsidy is coming from Urban Renewal, not from the, and the, it's also coming from general fund, given that the meter enforcement folks are coming out of general fund?
That is correct.
Okay. And so this study of what's the real cost of parking will address all of that. And we will be, maybe a year from now, looking at changing parking fees again? Or council may be thinking about that?
Again, we just recently completed Rick Williams undertaking a strategy for us, and I, it's my understanding that you received a copy of his recommendations. And now we're in the process of taking those and implementing those. The management strategies were recommended first, which is why they're in front of you this evening. But the Downtown Advisory Board and staff will be looking at the rest of his recommendations that will address the topics you raised this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett?
Just one more. I apologize, but what do we charge for a guy who owns a business downtown for his parking tax? What does that represent in terms of parking space costs? Thinking alike, my barber shop, the OK Barber Shop. I don't know what he pays. I'm sure he's told me many, many times. I just sort of haven't heard him yet. But what's he, what are they paying for a parking spot?
The parking tax calculation is based on the type of business you are and your square footage. And the minimum parking tax is $187 a year. And there's about 552 businesses, and about 49% of those pay the 187 or the minimum a year.
Okay. And that's customer for customer parking?
For the, for the free customer parking that we provide on-street and in the parking structures.
Okay.
Are there any further questions of staff? I'm sorry. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I actually, I was kind of thinking along the same lines as Counselor Bennett in terms of the cost of this parking is pretty low compared to other places in Salem where you have to purchase parking. And I especially was looking at the Riverfront. Could you, I just want a little bit of clarification on why that is so low. I mean, $20 a month, and it's walking distance to the state parking lots that are, are they 80 or something like that? And so, one, I guess I'd like to understand why the staff report says that there's just not demand for that lot. I'm wondering about that. And could you also explain specifically where that is? Because I, I'm not sure that I have a good understanding of that.
In reference to Riverfront, you are correct. The staff report reflects the fact that there is not the demand. What I have been able to observe, and I've talked to the people who work at the front of our office, who are dealing with anyone coming in to buy a permit, is most people just don't want to walk across the street. They consider, you know, the intersection, being closer in downtown, more accessible to their vehicle is most oftentimes what they're looking for. We have not seen an increase in demand over the last year. It's, it's stayed pretty status quo. We've tried to push the, the lower cost of parking, especially during the holiday season, when we see a lot more part-time employees working in the downtown to give them additional options. And we just haven't seen it. So as kind of a counterbalance to what we're doing with some of our other parkades, we thought it might be a good idea, based on the recommendations from Rick Williams, is to go ahead and decrease by a few dollars the parking at Riverfront, because it is a surface lot as opposed to a parkade. It is more on the outskirts of downtown, and to kind of help some of those people who maybe are not making as much money and are looking for a less expensive option, and to see kind of how that pans out in terms of the demand performance-based management strategy.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Could you explain specifically where that lot is?
Yeah, it's actually, it's, basically, it's right on the Riverfront. It's right near the carousel, the AC Gilbert House. Part of it is public parking, part of it is permit parking. If you kind of go closer to the, the front street side, you'll see some small signs that actually say that it's permit parking.
Are there any further questions for staff? No, hearing done. The public hearing will be closed. And is there any further council deliberation on this issue? This is in two different wards, so Counselor Bennett or Tesler, would either of you like to make the motion regarding establishing fee and change, charges for parking services?
Counselor Bennett has decided to defer to me, because he won't arm wrestle me for it.
All right.
So I'm going to go ahead and move staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by, it's been moved by Counselor Tesler, seconded by Counselor Thomas. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion passes. We have no first reading ordinances this evening, so we'll go to the second reading for ordinances. Will the recorder please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance Bill 1311 relating to public art, amending SRC 15.010, 020, 030, 050, 080, 090, and 100.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Cannon is absent. Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Aye. We have no one signed up this evening for public comment speaking. And we have no new business coming before the council. And we have no mayor's items or councillor's items. So if there's no further items to discuss, we are adjourned.
So, if there's no further items to discuss, we are adjourned.